Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. My name is Jayman Carr and I'm serving as chair. Directly to my right is Josh Neely, vice chair. And we have JP Boucher, who is a member, Robert Shaw, a member, and Steve Lionel, a member, and Joseph Potry, an alternate. So we have a full complement of five board members with us here this evening. So all five will be voting unless, for some reason, one of the members needs to accuse himself, in which case Mr. Potry will step in as an alternate. Although alternates are fully, you know, able to participate in all discussions of the board, alternates just don't vote. So tonight, we have four cases. We have two special exceptions and two requests for variances. So a special exception is a use that's allowed under the zoning ordinance so long as certain criteria is met. A variance is a deviation from the ordinance or a request to deviate from the ordinance. And in order to grant a variance, the board has to find that five criteria are met. So first of all, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, that it would be within the spirit of the ordinance, the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that granting the variance would result in substantial justice, that's to the applicant seeking it, that there would be no diminution of surrounding property values, and that if the variance were not to be granted, it would result in unnecessary hardship to the owner as a result of some sort of special condition on the property. So the general order of business is I will read the case into the record and then the applicant, okay, will come forward, state his or her name and address, and then we'll have 15 minutes to present the case to the board. Applicants don't have to take 15 minutes, but you do have up to 15 minutes if you wish. Then we open up the floor to anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the application. Anybody wishing to speak in favor comes forward, comes up to the podium. Again, you state your name and address, and you would have up to five minutes to say whatever it is you wish to say to the board. After we've gone through all of that, then we allow anybody who has questions, concerns, or opposition to any case to come forward. And very similarly, you state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address the board. And then, once we have gone through that, then we allow the applicant has an opportunity to come back and rebut or answer any questions that may have been raised during testimony. And again, that's up to five minutes. Finally, one person who has concerns or opposition may come back up to the board and has another five minutes to, again, if you say any final thoughts that you may have. So I don't know how many, we don't seem to have too, too many people here this evening, but that's the general course. Once we have gone through all the public testimony, then it comes back to the board and the board will deliberate. The board can then choose to make a decision this evening to either grant or not grant the request, or continue it to a future meeting date. So with that, I'm going to call roll for the board. So Josh Neely.
Present.
JP Boucher.
Present.
Robert Shaw.
Present.
Steve Lionel.
Present.
And Joseph Potry.
Present.
And so I should also note that to my left is Carter Falk, deputy planning manager, and he assists the board and is also, I think, some of you may have had opportunities to speak with Mr. Falk. Have there been any changes to the agenda?
No, there have not.
All right. So if there's nothing else to add, or if I failed to say anything that I probably should have, I'm going to read the first case into the record. Marcos Borlosi, owner, Umberto Nota of 11 Nagel Street, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to create an accessory dwelling unit, also known as an in-law apartment, in the basement of an existing home that's in the RV zone, Ward six. And if I butchered your names, I'm sorry. So if there's anybody here to speak for the case, please feel free to come up to the mic and just state, yes, and then just state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Umberto Borlosi and my address is 11 Nagel Street, National Hampshire.
And you want to just speak to your case, kind of explain what it is that you're hoping to do?
Yes. I have like a finished basement ready and I'm just looking to do, transform that into like an in-law apartment, putting up walls and opening another wall to the outside of the house. That's pretty much it, to the original structure of the house.
And there is a special criteria that you need to meet in order to have an accessory dwelling unit. You, I assume, have read these and are familiar with them?
Yeah, I read it once, yeah. I think like everything according to the standards from the criteria.
Very good. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, that's pretty much it.
Any board members have any questions for the applicant? Okay. So you can be seated.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience who has any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, we're going to close public testimony and bring it up to the board for deliberations. Thoughts?
Pretty straightforward. I found the application to be complete as in the space that he's looking to do in and meets all the criteria. I don't see anything here that would prevent me from supporting this case. I think it's, again, pretty straightforward and I'm going to support.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I also agree. It's well within the criteria for an ADU and meets all the regulations, so I think it's fine.
Any other thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception from Marcos Borlosi, owner, Umberto Nota, applicant, 11 Nagel Street, sheet 102 lot 48, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to create an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement of an existing house that's in the RV zone, Ward six. We find that the requested use is listed in the special exception use matrix, table 190-15, table 15-1. We find that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Again, this is an ADU, a request of a basement, and would not have any impact on those two items. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in the, any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Again, there was nothing here that would deem any of those to be true. The special regulations tested by the applicant, the accessory dwelling unit affidavit referencing land use code section 190-32, has been signed by the applicant. And the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand. So your special exception has been granted unanimously. Just know that there is a 30-day appeal period, so it is possible. It doesn't seem likely because there was no opposition, but there is, just be mindful that there is a 30-day appeal period. If you have any questions at all on how to proceed, feel free to reach out to Mr. Falk.
All set?
All set. Next, we have the application of Thomas and Sandra Mulgrew of 94 Nottingham Drive, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to construct an attached 24-by-30 accessory dwelling unit in back of garage. It's in the R9 zone, Ward nine. Is there somebody here to represent the applicant? And of course, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Sandra Mulgrew. I reside at 94 Nottingham Drive here in Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. My husband, Thomas, is unable to be here this evening. We're seeking the approval to construct a 720-square-foot ADU, accessory dwelling unit, attached via a shared vestibule to be built to the main house. The purpose of such is for our adult daughter, who suffers from a degenerative back condition. I believe we meet the criteria, I'm hoping so, and we've spoken to our direct abutter because during construction phase, it will most affect that household and that family. They're not here this evening, I didn't ask them to be, but they verbally said to us that they're okay with the temporary change, and we have to take down the fence and then we'll be rehabbing parts of their lawn that will be affected, and then the fence will go back up at the end of construction. The construction company working, we're working with is William Malling and Company, which I believe the board may have some familiarity with. I know the young lady in the office said they are, she is familiar with Bill. And I believe this may be not the first ADU in my neighborhood, but they're not, there's not a lot around, I do know that. I did have the signage necessary posted for the declared point of time I was asked to be, and it was removed by myself this evening right before coming to this meeting.
And as I asked the last applicant, of course, you did sign the affidavit, so you are aware of the special requirements.
Yes, my husband and I both did, and we did read it thoroughly. Yes, we did.
Great. Any questions from the board? All right, you can be seated, unless there's something else you'd like to add.
Thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, we'll close public input and bring it back up to the board for deliberation. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw.
Very straightforward, all the criteria appear to be met, and I see no reason not to proceed with affirming the special exception request.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Neely.
Yeah, they've got a very large fence around the property. Nobody's even going to know this ADU has been added to the back of the property, drive by it every day, it's a well-kept property. We had, the applicant has said they talked to the neighbors, that they're on board with this. As Mr. Shaw was saying, this is pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah, and I agree also. Any other thoughts? If not, is anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception requested by Thomas and Sandra Mulgrew, owners 94 Nottingham Drive, sheet C lot 1102, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to construct an attached 24-foot by 30-foot accessory dwelling unit in the back of the garage. This is in the R9 zone, Ward nine. The board finds that this is a requested, the requested use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix. We have no testimony or evidence that the requested use will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We don't have any evidence that the requested use will overload any public water drainage or sewer system or other municipal system. All the special regulations were fulfilled, agreed to by the applicant, and the requested use, we believe, will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. So again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Your second. Mr. Boucher. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? No one opposed, so your request is granted unanimously.
Thank you for hearing me.
Absolutely. And of course, as you heard, I mentioned previously, there is a 30-day appeal period.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll now read the next case. This is the application of Mario Arpeña of 27th Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach up to 6.7 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback, that's on the north Groton Street side, to maintain a recently constructed five-by-five roof basement entrance. It's in the RV zone, Ward four. Is the applicant present?
Thank you for having me. My name is Mario Arpeña, 27th Street, and I'm here for, I'm trying to put an entrance going into my basement. I know it's inside the setback, but it's not common in my neighborhood. It's a lot of, oh, sorry, I'm nervous, but, there's a lot of older homes in my neighborhood and everyone's kind of within that setback, and I just ask for something that's not uncommon. I do have pictures of what, around, houses around the neighborhood, just so you guys can look at if you guys want.
If you'd like, you could bring them up to the board and we can pass them around.
Sure.
Also, just so you know, we have to hold on to them for 30 days.
Sure.
Are these the same pictures that are in our application?
No, those are some, those are, yeah, that's my house, yeah. And the pictures that I have are just pictures around, like, random, a whole bunch of houses that are adjacent or on the same street as mine. So it's just to show that it's not uncommon for, for my setbacks are actually further back from what a lot of those homes are. I'm, I'm, I just kind of want this for, I have two daughters and I'm, just more for safety, just be able to get out of the basement, that's all.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
Yeah, a couple, a couple questions over here.
Yeah.
Is this house new construction?
The basement is, the, there was, there was a big, one of the, two foundation walls actually came down and had a company come out and they actually gave me all the foundation walls all around the house. So now I have a new basement, it's about eight feet high, which is great, but I don't have, when they were doing the construction, for them to get the machinery in, they had that opening for, to get the equipment out, you know, to do the work, yeah. And the workers, and after they were done, we put the door there to get, just to have an exit going outside. We stopped, it's not, obviously, the outside is not finished, the door, the entrance, because we wanted to make sure you guys approved of it. So I do apologize for that getting started, but we did stop. I'm hoping you guys will allow me to keep it. It would be a big inconvenience for me to not have it, so.
Just one more. Of course.
And is this the only door to the exterior? I'm assuming from your, it sounds like one goes to the first floor, but this is the only one that's an exterior door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Shaw.
So was there a building permit that was pulled for the foundation, you know, work?
There was.
And then was, is the issue basically, then, that this, this extra completion of this entrance was not part of the original plan? And that's why, because otherwise, I, it should have come to us before.
Yeah, and so, yes, yes. And so we did stop at that point and we tried, we've been trying just to get the variance for that, that's why I'm obviously here. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So there's, basically, the scope changed a little bit during the building process? Because this, this wasn't part of the original plan, it would appear?
Um, no, it was.
Or at least it wasn't communicated in a way that...
It was the, yeah, it wasn't communicated properly. So, but, I mean, if you, if you see the pictures, I am, even, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, even if there was a five-foot sidewalk added, I'd still be about eight feet back from that. So a lot of the homes in that area are older, you can see, so I wouldn't, it's not, to the neighborhood, it's not, it's, it's not a, I don't know how to explain, I'm sorry, I can't express my words, but it's not, it's not uncommon for it to be like that, so that's pretty much what I'm asking. And sorry, I'm, again, I'm just nervous. You're nervous.
It's okay, yeah. We don't bite.
Not much.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add? You can feel free to have a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? And just again, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
My name is John Crowley, I live at 14 7th Street. This house that they redo, they did this with, they redid the whole house inside and out. He's put a lot of work into it, a lot of time into it, he's improved the whole corner. And to get the variance, to put this, to get out into the basement, I think is very important. Compared to what the house was like before, it's been rebuilt 100 percent. And I approve of what they've done. So just to state that, that you'd have to see what they looked like before and what it looks like now, 100 percent different. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and take it up to the board for deliberation. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw.
I mean, I think it's always a little bit harder when we have kind of basically after-the-fact cases, you know, and I appreciate that this, exactly what happened, or at least it sounds like, is the kind of thing that does happen. I don't think there was any attempt to try to do something that they thought was not allowed, and I think it's just one of those things that happen. But I think the thing that still makes it easy for me, even though it isn't after-the-fact cases, is that I look at this as something that I believe I would approve if it hadn't been built yet. I think all the, you know, there's compelling evidence that this is a very common thing with many of these homes, very much up at the street frontage. It is a corner lot, which also drives further issues as far as having that double frontage. Having this kind of an entrance to a basement is highly preferred over, like, the classic, I can't even think of, like, just...
Bullkit.
Bullkit, thank you. You know, that kind of thing, or, you know, so, just like I said, I feel like everything about it fits with whether it was already constructed or not, so I am in support, obviously.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application. I remember this house before it was redone, so when I saw this application, I noticed right away, the windows are a different spot, so everything was redone. So in me, I kind of understood what was going on, and then, looking at the other side of the house, really close to the property line on the other side, so it would have made sense to put it on the opposite side of the house. So again, as Mr. Shaw said, I think that if it had come in front, you know, for myself, if it had come in front, I would have probably, you know, been accepted of it, as I am now. No different than if it was just a door there and we're looking just to put like a small porch entry or something. And again, as he said, the neighborhood is, really, housed up the street, steps are literally right to the sidewalk, small lot, it's a, it's, you know, it's got an angle to that side, so there isn't really much room to do anything else. But again, the property line's where it is, but the actual street's a little further away, so it doesn't appear to be as bad. And again, I don't think there's really any other options than putting it in the front of the house, which probably would make sense, so, so I'm going to support the application.
Any other thoughts? I think I agree with all the comments that have been made, and just also, no, I mean, the house is also partly in the setback already. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Mario Arpeña, owner, 27th Street, sheet 87 lot 129, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach up to 6.7 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on North Groton Street to maintain a recently constructed five-foot-by-five-foot roofed basement entrance. This is in the RB zone in Ward four. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because this is a, actually, very much done with many other houses in the same neighborhood. This is a bit of an older neighborhood with some smaller lots. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because these folks are doing this for multiple reasons, the biggest being safety reasons. It's the only egress from the basement, excuse me, from the basement, the finished basement. We did have some testimony from one of the neighbors that the basement has been, and from the applicant, the basement has been redone and was in a bit of a rough, that needed construction. Therefore, the construction folks had to go through this, and they created this, and the applicant after the fact now has to deal with it. But once again, it is common to the neighborhood. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that the shape of the lot is not a perfect square, as noted from discussion with the board. A part of the house is already in the setback. In addition, North Groton Street, which I believe was the one affected there, is on an angle to the house. If it was a square lot or a rectangle lot, this would not be required. The criteria in, excuse me, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. The property cannot be used in strict conformance with the ordinance because, as noted, it is an irregular shaped lot. There is a need to have an egress from the basement of the home, and it would not make sense on any of the other three sides, due to where the property lines are, to have this in a different spot. And there was a specific reason it was created by the construction company to the surprise of the applicant, which is why we are here today. And we also had neighborhood in favor, nobody spoke in opposition, so for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Your application's approved. I think, as you heard previously, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so just be mindful. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. So next, we have the application of Forance Properties LLC, 18 Abbott Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for minimum land area, 17,440 square feet existing, 43,560 square feet required, to construct an attached three-story, three-unit multifamily addition onto an existing four-unit multifamily building. It's in the RB zone in Ward three. Someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate, I'm a lawyer with Warner Bennett, 402 Amherst Street, Suite 302 here in Nashua, and I represent Forance Properties LLC, which is the owner and applicant of the property. With me tonight is Tim Forance, he and his brothers are the owners of Forance Properties. Also, Paul Chisholm, professional engineer with Keach Nordstrom Associates, they're the project surveyors and engineers. And Brent Chapel, Brent is the person who designed the floor plan and some elevation plans, and appeared before the Historic District Commission last year to present the application to that body because this property's in the historic district as well as being in the RB zone. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of handouts which I'll refer to, but I thought I'd pass them out right now if I could, give some property background, talk about the project a little bit, and then address the five criteria. Give some property background, talk about the project a little bit, and then address the five criteria. Thank you for helping me pass those out. So, this property is at 18 Abbott Street, it's in the RB district. What I've handed out is two packages, Mr. Chairman, which, again, I'll get to. The first one, which has a neighborhood density chart, eight-and-a-half by 11. We'll talk about that relative to the density of the units in this neighborhood, of all the properties in this neighborhood. The second plan set that I handed out is just a copy of the two exhibit plans we submitted with the application and the existing condition plan. So, the plan, the handout that does not have the eight-and-a-half by 11 is merely a copy of what was already appended to the application, which had 11 by 17s to look at. So, the property has, it's a three-story, four-unit building presently, apartments, with an attached garage, again, located in the RB district. It's very next, or very close to, in fact, right across the street, is the RC district, which you can tell on the colored map across from Abbott Street. The property is serviced by public water, sewer, natural gas, electric power, internet and telephone communications. It's a unique property in a lot of respects, and I'll get to that as we go. First of all, it's got frontage on three streets, as you can tell from the application and the plans. Contains about four-tenths of an acre, 17,446 square feet of land. At one time, it had a fifth residential unit, but that was discontinued. And as mentioned, it's in the historic district. So, back in June of 2024, last year, the Historic District Commission granted an approval to construct a three-unit, a three-story addition on the westerly side of the building, which is why we're here for the variance tonight from the density requirements of the RB district. The existing garage would be raised, the addition would be added effectively where the garage is, but bigger than the garage. The Historic District Commission members noted at their hearing that they found the garage useless, I put that in quotes, and they felt that the floor plans and elevations Mr. Chapel had prepared for the addition fit, fit this property. And they mean that, of course, within the context of architectural perspective, because that's their purview. As I mentioned, Mr. Chapel presented this to the Historic District Commission here tonight, and he can answer questions regarding any of the planned details, if the board's so inclined. What's proposed in the application we submitted is about six to eight feet closer to French Street than what went before the Historic District Commission. And that's because of the way we tried to lay out the parking in the rear of the property, as we'll get to. This property is about, it's larger than the combined area of the two properties on the block. The block only has three properties on it, as you'll see from the plans. Interestingly, this section of Nashua, just, of course, north of downtown, has a variety of nearby uses, including significant multifamily-type use across, excuse me, across from Merrimack Street, which is anywhere from 21 to 30 units, based on the assessor records. And on the other side of the property, on Abbott Street, is a nine-unit property, because it's kitty-corner to Mount Pleasant Elementary, and also to a warehouse on the Merrimack Street side. So, it's really a quite isolated little spot, in a way. And that was kind of part of the background thought process we had, and whether this is a reasonable approach to bring before you tonight, and that the isolated nature and the unique spot that this property occupies. If you could take a look, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, at the two, the plans that went with the application, they're called ZBA Exhibit 1 and 2. And I've highlighted in yellow, just so you can easily find the heading of those. Just wanted to give you a little sense further of the nature of the project. So, we presented two approaches, not different in terms of the addition itself, but in terms of the parking. So, ZBA Exhibit 1 contemplates nine parking spaces off of Abbott Street, as you can see, in the southerly side of the property, and two off French Street. Right now, there's a wide driveway, if you will, on French Street, that's used for the parking. This would be narrowed to 12 feet, and two spaces placed there. We need 11 spaces total for onsite parking. If you take a look at the ZBA Exhibit 2, you'll see that the French Street parking spaces have been taken away, and all 11 spaces would be off of Abbott Street, in the rear of the property. And part of the rationale of doing that was because, if we were fortunate enough to get the variance, we still obviously have to go to the planning board. We would need an additional use permit for the use, and also, we would need site plan approval. And part of that process would involve this parking layout, which may be thought of as the better one. And that could be done with public input as well, of course. Other than the density requirement of the RB district, all the other dimensional requirements in the ordinance are met. The open space, for example, build-floor coverage ratio. And the reason they're met, and they're relatively easily met, is because of the modest nature of the addition. What's contemplated is three units, approximately 792 square feet each. So, you've really got a small footprint, and then two units above that footprint. And because of that, the open space ratio is only about, in the order of 50% on one plan and 53% on the other, when 35% is needed. So, 35% is the minimum open ratio you must meet, and we meet it by either being at 50% or 53%, depending upon the plan that's used. Floor area coverage ratio is easily met, it's only 14% versus 50% maximum required. This property was fully surveyed, that is, unlike most cases that come before you, where there's a GIS or a tax map used as a base. We had this fully surveyed in advance, so that we could be absolutely sure what variances might be needed, and determine only that the density one was, and then be very accurate as to what that entailed. One other aspect of the project is screening. We know that there's a sensitivity, certainly, to the location of the parking lot, whether it be nine spaces or 11 on the south end of the property. And there are two abutting properties adjacent to it, 17 Merrimack Street and 14 Abbott Street. The parking layout is such that, as you were driving from Abbott Street, parking spaces are all facing and adjacent to the building. So, the turning into the spaces would be away from the abutting properties to the south. Nine spaces is obviously a little bit less of a burden than 11 spaces on those abutting properties, and that's the reason we had the two, the idea of the two possibilities. And again, if the board saw fit to grant the variance, we would respectfully ask that it not be conditioned on either one or the other, but let that be a planning board determination. And as mentioned, although this board doesn't design screening for any particular project, we would contemplate significant screening, both in terms of planting and fence work. It's an existing train link fence now, I believe, that would go away, and a more solid fence with proper plantings, that the planning board found appropriate, would be contemplated. Tim Forance did reach out to neighbors as best he could, and was finding some available, was able to talk to some people about it. You may hear from one or two neighbors this evening. He made every effort he could to try to explain the project to them. So, if I could describe the five criteria, Mr. Chairman, thank you, please. So, the first is that the granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. We would respectfully submit that it's not contrary to the public interest to allow this variance to have a total of seven units on this property, excuse me, a total of seven units on this property, for this three-unit modest addition that contemplates relatively quite small units to be added in this particular case, given the nature of the property and the public interest in finding something appropriate for this immediate location and isolated spot. As I mentioned, we have either 21 to 30-unit property to our west, a nine-unit property to our east, a warehouse to the northwest, and the elementary school to the northeast. And we're right next to the RC district. This property can accommodate these additional three units, as I mentioned, particularly focusing on the other dimensional requirements, and the open-space one in particular, relatively easily met. And of course, the ordinance contemplates and encourages infill development in various parts of the city, including this area near downtown. Second criteria is that the use would observe the spirit of the ordinance. Again, the ordinance contemplates infill development, encourages it, especially in the area of the RB district, which the ordinance cites as being one of the older residential sections in Nashua, supporting its urban core. It's an ability to enhance some affordable housing capability in this part of town, obviously. And it can be done in a manner that's adequate and reasonable for the site, again, thinking of all the unique aspects of this site. We're not proposing something that, if you were in the middle of a residential block, for example, and wanted to increase density contrary to what's nearby. What you'll see in the chart that I'll describe is that we're in an area in which the density we contemplate is not out of sync with what's nearby. You could take a look at that briefly, if you would, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm looking now at the neighborhood density chart and the related GIS map. And what we did was, if you look at the GIS extract we did, you'll see colored in orange the site, corner of French Abbott and Merrimack Streets. It has four units presently, three more proposed. So, if you look around, you see the size of the lots nearby. You go up to that V right above us, of course, and the lots narrow down quite significantly. You've got 2, 2, 3, and one unit heading up, straight up north from where we are. You'll see where the elementary school is. The nine units to our east, the RB, RC zone being right over there. And the 21 to 30 units to our west. And the two properties, 17 Merrimack and 14 Abbott, right below us on the south. So, if you then take a look at this density chart that we made, what we did was, we listed all those lots that we identified and figured out the number of units, all this being based on the assessor's data, of course, and tried to do a little calculation. How many units are there per square foot? Or how many square feet are there per unit on these various properties? So, I think there's about 17 or 18 listed here. 18 Abbott Street presently, with four-tenths of an acre, is about, it's in the upper half, if you will, of the density with our proposed seven units. So, we're about the ninth-densest property in this area, if the three-unit variance was granted. Currently, if you go towards the bottom of that chart, we're about the fourth or fifth least-dense property, really the fourth least-dense residential property with the four units. So, we're somewhere in the order of 2,500 square feet per unit, if we had the proposed seven units, which is, again, not out of whack, if you will, and not out of sync with what's nearby, and certainly less dense than a number of properties right in the immediate area. And we would respectfully submit that that finding, that nature of what we've got here is consistent with not just the spirit of the ordinance, but also the public interest. Third criteria is substantial justice be done. Of course, the board's well aware that there's a basic test to that. Substantial justice is done if the general public realizes no appreciable gain from the variance being denied, but the applicant's adversely affected in a material manner, if it is denied. Here, the general public realizes no appreciable gain. If it's denied, it merely precludes three units of affordable, modest housing that could be put on a lot that readily can accommodate it. Granted, there's no harm to the general public. Fourth criteria is that the proposed use not diminish the value surrounding properties. I think it's fairly generally thought that when new construction is done in an older neighborhood, that tends to show a vitality and interest in investment in that neighborhood, which tends to also show interest in property values being upheld. I think this is especially true in this particular case, where we're trying to propose some reasonable investment for this uniquely cited property, which, again, is kitty-corner to two significant non-residential pieces, the school and the warehouse, and right across the street in each direction from two very densely developed properties. Richard Jean, who's a longstanding realtor in Nashua, wrote a letter addressed to the board, commenting on whether he felt there was an adverse effect on property values. If I may hand it out right at the end, if that's the most, or right now, as you wish, Mr. Chairman. I'll hand it to them. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, it's hardship standard, of course. And the question that we are always posed in this kind of case is whether or not literal enforcement of the ordinance results in a unnecessary hardship. Hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from others, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and its application of this property, and the use is reasonable. We would respectfully submit that this property has a great number of special conditions. Again, it's in a quite densely developed, longstanding, central-city neighborhood, across the street from two very highly-developed properties, two non-residential properties, immediately next to the RC district, frontage on three streets, quite isolated, larger than the properties adjacent to it, and large enough to accommodate three additional very modest units, when looking at the other dimensional criteria. The result of what we propose doesn't change, is not materially different from much of the sort of per-unit density, if you will, on these nearby neighboring properties. So, we keep those special conditions in mind, because that's how we measure hardship. Hardship is not done in a vacuum, it's done recognizing these special conditions of any property. And we would respectfully note that this property can adequately accommodate the three-unit addition of modest residential housing, given all these special criteria, including the mix of uses in the area, the density of the neighborhood, the unique location, the isolated nature of this property with the three frontages at the point of a triangle, if you will, the proximity to the RC district. And all of that, I think, shows that the special conditions of this property find that, and support a finding that the purposes of the ordinance don't bear a substantial and fair relationship when applied in this case. I don't think the density requirements intended to frustrate appropriate infill development and investment, especially in light of what the RB district purposes are.
And you are about out of time, so if you could wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Please feel free to come up to the podium and just state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Diana Tullow, 17 Merrimack Street in Nashua. I have bought the property that Tim and his family own. And I just wanted to, I just have a couple of things. The counselor keeps saying that it's an isolated property. I don't understand what he means by that. It's a residential property, that there's a lot of families that live there. I don't, I am opposed to this building, even though Tim was gracious enough to come over and speak to my husband and myself the other day. My husband's not... My husband's not able to be here this evening. Tim tried to explain to us what was going on. He brought blueprints, and we were very appreciative of it. I was running out to work, was not able to spend a lot of time with him, but my husband was able to talk with him for a few minutes. And as gracious as he was, it doesn't change our mind that we are opposed to it. I feel it's a very looming structure. I feel it's going to be intrusive. And I also feel, you know, it is a quiet neighborhood. A lot of families walk their kids to school right around there. I'm thinking of all the extra cars and all the extra traffic. It's a very small street. It's not, you know, half of Merrimack Street is actually one-way coming from Amherst, so it's not, you know, we do have traffic, like when St. Chris's School gets out, there's a lot of loop traffic that comes around. But I'm just thinking about my personal pleasure in my home, and I feel that it is definitely going to be devalued. It's, you know, I don't have a lot of land with my house as far as green space goes. We spend a lot of time in our backyard. We have a big family that visits all the time. It's only my husband and myself that live there. But, you know, that structure kind of infiltrates on my property that I bought, and I do believe it's going to devalue my property. If I ever decide to sell my home, I think it is intrusive. And, you know, if it's, I just think that if you're looking at my house and you have this big structure, it's big enough as it is, and it's fine, there's lovely people that live there, but if you add on all that more, and it's going to be from the ground up, three floors, that's, that's something, you know? And so I just wanted to say that. As gracious as they were to come over, I am opposed to it. I'm the one who lives right there, and I'm not interested in having a big fence that's going to cut me off sort of from the rest of the world, you know what I mean? We have a nice open driveway, it's a nice open street, a lot of people walk up and down, you say hi to your neighbors, it's a quiet neighborhood, for the most part. So I just wanted to be on the record that I am opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'm Anthony Pascale. I live at Twenty-Six Abbott and for fifty-two years. And I'm glad the garage is going. So am I to assume that there's not going to be a basement under these three? So it's on a path.
You could just direct your questions to us and...
Oh, sorry. So I think, I didn't see any plans or anything. It might work. The big deal for this property, and always has been, is parking. The existing driveway is double spaces, and the tenants don't like that, so they park on the street. And that's not the only house. Parking enforcement, like the rest of the city, is understaffed. Police, fire, code enforcement, building department, parking enforcement, they don't come around. The school that really drives the traffic in the afternoon, the issue is Mount Pleasant. They park on top of the stop signs, they park on top of the fire hydrants. They plug up across the street from Eighteen, there's signs, no parking. They park left-wheeler curb, right on top of it. Parking enforcement is afraid to go around there. They need a police officer with them, because they get ugly. I've talked to people and... But, back to Eighteen Abbott, their tenants park on the street overnight. Now landlords can't be on-site all the time, and parking enforcement comes, oh, I don't know, once a month, once it'd be two months, once it'd be three months, very seldom. They don't have the staffing, so they stay on the street. And they, one of them, I just took a picture this morning, or yesterday, no, yesterday morning, it's a new vehicle, green Tahoe, right on top of the stop sign on Abbott, blocking the sidewalk, right in the front door of Eighteen Abbott. Stayed overnight. There's a pickup truck with mass plates, a stretch cab Chevy, that parks there. It's a suburban, it's a Tahoe, and a different Tahoe, a beige one, parks on, pretty much in front of Four French entrance. And that's another issue, I don't know how the mailbox got moved from Four French to the front. When that happened, whoever lives at Four French now, they don't get packages, they actually get put on Twenty Abbott. That's One French. And I see people wandering around. If I see them, I direct them to that, so I don't know what happened there. So anyways, Eighteen Merrimack is an issue also. They don't have enough parking. There's a vehicle right now that parks right behind, they're literally on the sidewalk, if there was one, that's still city property, and it parks, sometimes there's two or three from that building. Thirty Merrimack, Twenty-Eight Merrimack, Twenty-Eight Abbott, some more. They park on the streets. Most of them have places to park, without parking enforcement doing their job. Twenty-Eight Abbott has an illegal unit. That's why, that's really not a three. I don't know how this over time, I was at that meeting, it's supposed to be a two-family, and the city was supposed to enforce the green space between Thirty and Twenty-Eight. Never happened.
If you wouldn't mind wrapping up, you are out of time. If you wouldn't mind just wrapping up your thoughts.
Anyways, I'm against it, provided the parking for this, eleven spaces is not going to be enough. There's technically eight spaces now, but they're on the street. If we add three more units... And there's an issue with the GIS, they're still listing, the application sign on the front says it's four units, but GIS still claiming it's five units. So is this the illegal apartment that was there years ago? Do we know?
We'll ask the applicants to address that. So thank you for your comments. Is there any questions from the board? Thank you. I don't see anybody else to speak in, with any opposition or questions or concerns, so I think the applicant is returning to provide a rebuttal and maybe answer some of the questions that have been asked.
Let me try to, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And if I may defer one or two minutes of my time to Mr. Chisholm regarding the parking matter.
Yes.
So just a couple thoughts. As Mr. Forrester indicated, there would be no basement for the three-unit addition. He very much appreciates Mr. and Mrs. Tala taking time to speak with him, Seventeen Merrimack Street, when he came by and spoke with people in the neighborhood. And we recognize that this is not a minimal request that's being put before the board, we certainly understand that. But again, the property is in a very, very unique location, and the neighborhood around it has a density that we propose, it's not really out of sync with what is contemplated The planning board process, of course, is an opportunity to figure out ways in which to best screen fence and militate the impact that this may have on Seventeen Merrimack Street. But we always have to keep in mind that the variance applications are determined based on the special and unique conditions of a property. Again, not in isolation as to how one aspect of it may affect an adjoining property, but the totality of how this property and its unique circumstances fit within the ordinance provisions and also fit within the variance criteria. With appropriate input, matters of traffic, matters of impact on adjoining properties, how to best deal with that can be handled through the planning board process. And lastly, the, what's being designed, these three units, again, a three-story building, would have a roof line at a similar height to what's already existing. So it's not to be higher than what's existing, but to effectively match what's existing. If I may ask Mr. Chisholm to talk briefly about traffic, unless the board has further questions of us, of course.
Mr. Boucher.
So, so again, just to clarify my point, you're not here asking for any variance on the height of the building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco, and then Mr. Shaw.
Sure. Oh, no worries. Do I understand correctly that as of right, you could build 2.8 units, but it's basically the extra points two that you need for the variance?
No, the, the RB district allows seven units per acre. We have four. We're already pre-existing for that requirement, because of the age of this building. The RC district allows twelve per acre, right across the street, but under any analysis, a variance would be needed for all three. And by the way, that fifth unit, which we think must have existed at some point, no longer does exist, and never, did not exist when the Forresters bought the property. Only four exist, and they fully understand that.
Mr. Shaw has a question.
I just also wanted to follow up on one of the questions that was about the description of it being a quote-unquote "isolated" property, and if you could expound on what you meant by that, because quite frankly, it wasn't that clear to me either, how you intend that to be taken.
So I guess in a couple ways. One is the three, having three frontages, number one, so we're not in the middle of a continuous residential block. Frankly, this, in my mind, this would be a case that I would not have even have thought of, if we were seeking this kind of density in a, in the middle of a block that had one frontage, front yard, backyard, neighbors, all of that. That's not the kind of case that would go before you, I think, with any viability. But it's isolated in the sense we're on a very small block, and we're, we're not in the middle of the continuum of other residential properties of a, you know, two-family or three-family ilk. We're across the street from twenty-one-plus units, nine-plus units the other side, kitty corner to a warehouse, kitty corner to the school. So we're isolated in the sense of geographically to some degree, but also from the core of the residential properties themselves. And that's, that's the context I meant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Happy to...
Mr. Chisholm.
Mr. Chisholm, thank you.
Okay, for the record, Paul Chisholm with Keach Northstrom Associates, I'm a professional engineer, and we are the engineers and surveyors. I appreciate the rebutter pointing out the fact that, you know, parking is a problem out there today. I can understand that. This parking lot is not compliant, the existing parking lot, I mean, is not compliant really in any way, shape, or form. It's too close to the Merrimack and French Street corner, so driveways are required to be fifty feet from any intersection. I think that's why we had drawn up a couple of different exhibits for you, to kind of help depict that a little bit. I think there's a balance here in the sense of what could be proposed if we wanted to keep a driveway off of there, what it would have to look like to kind of meet the compliance of that. But that's just one, you know, component of it. Obviously, the double-stack parking and really having to back out, you know, into the street from it, it's not, it's really a friendly place to park, so I can understand if it's not being used really as it's kind of intended for the actual square footage of parking space that it is, and that people choose to park on the street instead, because it's just easier to get in and out of. It's a matter of convenience. I think in either event, allowing this to move forward and go to the planning board level, if there's some balance between how much parking is behind or next to one of the adjacent properties, but we have a more compliant or fully compliant, you know, parking situation, that's, it's basically effectively a lot friendlier for the actual users of the property, I think that we'll find that they'll have a tendency to actually use that as it's intended, as opposed to this particular situation. So again, you know, if anything was proposed in this configuration today, obviously, I, you know, I don't think it would have a shot at getting approved, quite frankly. It would need numerous variances, probably, excuse me, waivers from the planning board. And I don't think that they would be granted. So, long story short, I think this is kind of the chance to bring this forward to the planning board, really clean up some of these issues, modernize the property, provide extra landscaping, obviously a big factor. I think I heard some folks talking about, you know, a lot of people walking in the neighborhood. The planning board's obviously very big on sidewalks and making sure that those are improved to standards and things of that nature. So all of that stuff will get flushed out. I think this is a good opportunity for the city to, as Brad mentioned, kind of bring some new investment into this area and clean up an older property that does have some deficiencies along the way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
When, when this project is complete, do we know, what is, what is the distance between the finished product and Seventeen Merrimack? Any chance you know? I know you were talking about parking, but I believe this isn't your area of expertise.
Yeah, between the actual, so the, I'm sorry, you're talking about the buildings specifically?
The building, yeah. Don't care about the parking. It's the building, building to building, please.
So I don't have an exact distance to where their house is on the property.
You could eyeball it.
Yep. So we've got, it's about forty, the proposed edge is about forty-five feet to their property line, and the existing garage is about fifty-five feet, so in total, it's going to be, that structure's going to be about ten feet closer to their building at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none? Thank you. So for the neighbors, either of you, just one of you, but either of you could choose to come back and, you know, address any comments that you heard, or provide any additional testimony, if you wish. It's totally up to you.
I have a statement from the rebutter of Twenty Abbott over in State.
Yes, please.
And it's basically the same issues, the park. It creates a safety.
In fact, Mr. Pacheco, if you could, I pass it down, I can read that into the record.
And Mr. McCarver, you just want to make sure then that neither of them does want to speak, it just seems...
So did either of you have anything else that you wanted to address? It's entirely up to you.
But only one of you can. That's, that's the way our bylaws are written, but neither of you...
And if not, that's...
Nobody has to come back up, it's just we want, want to make sure we understand that if you wish to, that we're not keeping you from coming up, so. And you can confer if you needed to.
So if you're good, I'm going to go ahead and read this letter into the record. This is from Nabil and Hana Bahu. They are at Twenty Abbott Street. It's addressed to the zoning board of adjustment, and it says, "To whom it may concern. We've lived in this neighborhood for many years and have seen the growth of added rental units that has brought problems with traffic and parking issues. Overnight parking has been an ongoing issue, especially during the winter season. The DPW plow trucks have a hard time clearing our streets because of vehicles left overnight on the street in spite of the parking ban. Parking enforcement rarely patrols our neighborhood. Afternoon school traffic is hazardous when parents park in front of the fire hydrants, stop signs, no parking signs, street intersections, and even blocked driveways with no enforcement to prevent these safety hazards. Specifically to Eighteen Abbott Street, there's a history of tenants leaving their vehicles overnight on French and Abbott Street around this property. This safety issue spans several owners through the years of Eighteen Abbott Street. There are several properties in the neighborhood that have the same issue. Eighteen, Twenty-Eight, Thirty Merrimack Street, and Seventeen to Twenty-One, Two, Twelve, Twenty-Eight, Thirty-Five, and more on Abbott Street, Mount Pleasant, Twenty-Five to Twenty-Seven Greeley, and French also have overnight parking issues. The current parking issues, the current parking issue needs a redesign with additional spaces off Merrimack Street while balancing the green space to provide for the current tenants. Adding three more units brings six more vehicles. I have not noticed that the City of Nashua lists Eighteen Abbott as having five units and not four, or I have noticed that the City of Nashua lists Eighteen Abbott as having five units and not four stated on the ZBA notice. This also needs to be resolved before allowing any more units. We are opposed to any more units at Eighteen Abbott Street until existing parking issues are resolved." Thank you. Okay. So I think we've gone through all the testimony, so we're going to bring it back up to the board for deliberation. I do want to note that although I'm not in a butter, in full disclosure, this is my immediate neighborhood. My house is actually on these exhibits. I don't believe that that impairs my ability, though, to make a fair and reasonable judgment, but doing that on the record. Thoughts of the board? Mr. Lainow.
Yeah, I mean, we've had lots of testimony about parking. Parking is really part of the planning board's domain, but my feeling is that the design of this, of this plan with the 11 spaces where they are, especially, I sort of prefer the number-two version that has all of the spaces in a row, would alleviate some of the parking load from this property. Because as has been testified, there's currently this double stacking of vehicles that, you know, obviously people don't like, and this plan would eliminate that. We can't do anything, nor should we do anything here about what other, residents of other properties do, but it's my feeling that this plan, if done the way it's specified here, would reduce, to some degree, on-street parking of residents of 18 Abbott. Other than that, I think it's a good plan, a good use of the property. You know, the historic district was okay with the physical design appearance. I think it would net, be a net benefit to the neighborhood, so my inclination is to support the plan.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm struggling with it, and I don't know that I can support it at this point, but I just want to, especially, I mean, I do agree as far as the parking, yeah. I mean, first of all, we just want to make sure there's sufficient parking, and that's addressed, and I do think there would be a net overall benefit, so that, I think, is a good thing with the plan. And I actually think the proposal itself, in some, many ways, seems reasonable to me. I guess where my struggle lies is that, and I know this gets in the tricky part of we talk about like how much of an area, when we talk about a neighborhood, and we also talk about like immediate, essentially adjacent properties and all, but when I do zoom in, I mean, number 20 Abbott, and then we've certainly been talking about number 14 Abbott and 17 Merrimack, those are the three properties we heard opposition from. But also, when you look at this, this kind of table of the density, all three of these properties, along with the property in question, are all in this lower-density populated set of properties. So the immediate properties are in the less dense kind of grouping. So in one sense, this is like, it kind of almost is like, both kind of plays to and against, I think, Attorney Westgate's argument about it being an isolated property, because yeah, it's isolated in this block, but two of these properties are on this little block, and then immediately across the street, across French Street is one of the other properties in question. So I look at that, and I'm going, well, the density of the way it exists now in these other properties are much more consistent. Now we're talking about a proposal that moves this property to much denser and away from these other properties, and much more towards the much more highly, you know, populated and densely developed units. So, like I said, I know when you zoom out, and this area has lots of heavy residential use, but I'm just struggling to necessarily see, and maybe that's where somebody can help me out with the argument, when we really do look at the hardship criteria, and I'm just, I wasn't really convinced by the argument put forth tonight by the applicant. So that's where I'm at.
Other thoughts? I got, I'm sorry, Mr. Neely.
So, those are good points, Mr. Shaw. I'm also having a bit of a problem with the hardship, like what hardship got us here? That being said, when I look at this lot, it is an oversized lot. And the parking has been addressed. I mean, that's going to get addressed in this whole thing, and that sounds like a bunch of the opposition is there. I actually felt pretty good about the plan, hearing that when this is completed, we're still looking at about 45 feet between the completed building and 17 Merrimack. That's a good amount of space. I know all the parking is going to be, or probably will be shaded by trees or fences or whatever, but yeah, it's the hardship, and I'm probably going to need, I'm probably going to need some convincing with somebody here to get me over the hardship criteria as well. I mean, this property was like this when they bought it. Listen, I'm all about adding more property in there, but what's the actual hardship here? And I'm not sure I'm convinced at this moment which way I'm going to vote on this.
Any other thoughts? I, you know, I guess just to chime in, what inclines me toward supporting the application is that, well, I do agree with Mr. Shaw, if you're looking at 17, 14, and 20, but if you're also looking across the street, across Abbott and across Merrimack to 18, you have over 20 units in that building, and then you've got nine units directly opposite the property on Abbott Street. As I look around the neighborhood in general, I think the density is consistent with the neighborhood. It's kind of right in the middle of the pack. It is an unusually sized lot. I think special conditions exist in the size of the lot and the fact that it has three frontages, also the position of the property in one kind of corner, of the building in one corner of the property. That, and that the larger properties in the neighborhood, and I am zooming out a little bit from the immediate butters necessarily, tend to be either larger multifamily buildings or non-residential in character. Certainly, it is a very mixed area, and yeah, I do think the hardship question is a question, but I think the special conditions exist, and the use that's proposed, given in terms of its density and its massing, is a reasonable use, and that's what could get me towards meeting the hardship criteria. Other thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
Like yourself, I believe that there is enough special conditions on the property, again, the size, location, and again, what's surrounding it. The hardship, I do understand the thought and the concern about that. I don't dismiss that. I just don't think that, for me, the bar is high enough to be there. Mean to say that there is enough special conditions of this property, location, and what this is, and position of the existing house that exists, that gets me there to support the application. And again, parking, it's not, I know it's like a known issue. It means, I believe, yes, it will be handled by the planning board. It's not that I'm just going to pass it on. I think sometimes we've done some things to address a little bit of that. But again, the existing issue in the neighborhood, as Mr. McCarr can probably contest to, is something that's been there. I've been down there when the school's letting out, and yeah, it's tough. I don't live in a neighborhood that's this compact, but at one time, a long time ago, I had a problem where I live, where in my neighborhood, where there was school parking that they just started parking all over the streets, and the way I saw that problem was I went to see my alderman, and he suggested, again, that I go out and get signatures. I did that, and legislation was done, and then that grew to other sides of the school neighborhood. So I know that there's a way around this, and I do feel for the constituents, that the people that live there, that feel like parking enforcement is not doing their job. There's just so many people, and I'm sure that they are busy doing a lot of the things, but I think, for me, just as a suggestion, I think one of the routes was, you know, to see your ward alderman, and maybe that can help you, you know, go forward something, but I don't know if that's been done. So, but other than that, I think that I'm at a point where I would support the application.
And I would add, if I could, that on the parking line, I think while parking is generally a planning board concern, I do think it's a legitimate issue to consider in an application like this, where it's been raised as a specific issue. And in this case, I think that this does improve the parking situation over what's there now. The tandem, you know, I'm going off on a tangent, but one of the reasons why you have the issue that you do, one of, the bottom line is really enough parking. But one of the reasons is because many properties here do have tandem parking, and that really doesn't work in a multifamily situation in particular, and that is why many people park on the street. Mr. Shaw.
Just one thing more to add, just because it was brought up in testimony, I believe, but the 11 is the minimum requirement, that it's a calculation based on one and a half per, spaces per unit, and which would be 10 and a half, that rounds up to 11. So that's why 11 has been proposed, and that meets the criteria. So just for those of you that are interested, that's, so even though it might seem like that's not enough, that is technically what the city requires, so just thought that should be clear, hopefully for folks.
Any other thoughts? Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll do it. Just get my bearings. I got so many papers all around the place, I think I kind of lost where I was. Bear with me for one moment while I find the application. This handout and this handout. There you go. I'd like to make a motion at the application of Forens Properties LLC, 18 Abbott Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 17,446 square feet existing, 43,560 square feet required, to construct an attached three-story, three-unit multifamily addition onto an existing four-unit multifamily building be approved. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the overall density would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and although parking has been raised and traffic to some extent as an issue in the neighborhood, the proposed, the proposal would actually improve parking conditions in the neighborhood, so there would not be an adverse impact. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It does provide infill housing in a higher-density neighborhood, which is desired, and within the scheme of the ordinance. And again, it is consistent with the overall character of the area, both in terms of size, massing, and density. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the benefit to the public in denying the application would not outweigh the burden to the property owner by not being able to fully utilize the property. We find that the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. We did have a butter testify that she did believe it would negatively impact her property value, but we also had testimony submitted from a real estate professional stating that, in his opinion, it would not. And we do find that a necessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property to distinguish it from other properties exists, mainly the special conditions being the large size of the lot relative to the lot sizes of surrounding properties, and the fact that the property does have three frontages, and also the position of the existing building on the property. And that given those special conditions, given the overall character of the neighborhood, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the density requirements of the ordinance and its specific application to this property, and we find that the use that's proposed, seven units on a lot of this size in a neighborhood of this density, is a reasonable one. So for those reasons, I move that the application be granted.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw.
No, no, but Mr. Lainow.
Ah, sorry, Mr. Lainow. Any discussion?
We look alike.
You look alike, that's right. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Mr. Shaw opposed. So the variance is granted for one. Of course, as you know, there is the 30-day window of appeal.
Thank you. Here, please.
So we have, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda for our upcoming meeting?
Yes.
Anybody see any regional impact?
No.
I do not either. Takes us to approval of the minutes. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections, Mr. Patri? Down on you.
I think we had the wrong email address, because it says the public, when Mr., we have, the recounting of Mr. Neely's, you know, he was going through the introduction, isn't the email for them to submit comments, zv.nashville.co?
As opposed to planning board?
Yeah.
I think they'll both work.
Oh, well, they both, okay. I thought somewhere it said that it was zv.
I've seen the zv before also, but it all goes to the same place, I think.
Depends on if the people read. Sure. Yeah. Page two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Line seven, the only way they can do, the only way that they could do the addition, I think we want a which after, which is by encroaching. I think there's something missing from that sentence. I'm not entirely sure what. I think which is by encroaching, or that is by encroaching.
It seemed like something was missing.
Yeah, agreed. So maybe after addition, comma, which, or that.
I think that.
That, I think, works. Then the only, I think the only other cha, page four, where we say, Mr. Sitka said that is correct, I think we want to say, comma, that there would be no new construction to the outside, because it's kind of left, I think it's left a little hanging. Because I think, if I remember correctly, I think you were telling us that there'd be, it was all interior, they wouldn't be doing anything on the outside. Oh, page six, the, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, Mr. Chisholm said that the parking requirement is satisfied. I think we want to add requirement, because it just said the parking. I think that's it.
Any other corrections, changes? If not, someone want to make a motion?
Move to approve the minutes with noted updates.
Motion by Mr. Shaw.
March 25th meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Neely. All those in favor?
I was going to abstain, so I should recuse myself then, so that you can...
And I do see a review of bylaws, but I don't think we need to review bylaws. It's all those, yeah. So I don't think we need to review bylaws if everybody agrees. Motion to adjourn. Unless anybody has any other business you wanted to bring forward. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I think we seconded, and we're all in agreement, so, all right. We're adjourned.